Okay, it is now six o'clock on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. I'd like to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Halifax. We are in the Selectmen Meeting Room. I am joined by Selectman Bill Smith, Selectman Thomas Pratt, myself, Selectman Jonathan Seelig, Town Administrator Bob Fennessy, and our Assistant Pamela McSherry. This meeting has been posted in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20B, and pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 20F. Notice is being made that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Area 58 Community Access Channel. The Board Chair, that's myself, reasonably anticipates that the following matters posted on this agenda will be discussed and/or voted on at this meeting, and the agenda items may be taken out of order for time management considerations. And if you guys will all join me, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we want to start with the affirmation, the approval of abatements, bills, commitments, and warrants. Bill, you got it?
No, I got it.
All right.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 30 for $271,987.42. Ambulance commitments, 91525 to 92125 for $42,331.30.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitment. Payroll warrant number 29 for $480. Payroll warrant number 31 for $451,734.25. Vendor warrant number 32 for $102,909.22. Withholding warrant number 33 for $157,654.56. School warrant number 34 for $262,338.42. Mobile park fee number 10 for $5,160.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. All right, we'll jump down to A on your agenda. If you're following it home with Agenda Bingo, we'll start with our Plymouth County Outreach discussion on opioid funds. I believe we have a presentation here, Chief.
So this is Vicky Butler, she's the Executive Director?
Executive Director.
Okay.
Of a PCO, and this is Chief Kane from Brockton.
Okay.
The Executive Board of Plymouth County PCO. So they'll be giving a presentation on what PCO is, how PCO helps all the communities in Plymouth County.
Okay.
And kind of making a request, the Board is likely to consider taking some of our opioid funds that we've been getting from the state, or who we've been getting from the state, to allocate a contribution to the PCO.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Can you have the chair, and you can come over here, I'm going to sort of go through, like, see the presentation first?
Yeah, I'll take her seat, so if you can be able to see it. Yeah, good. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here. Again, my name is Vicky Butler, I'm the Executive Director for Plymouth County Outreach. I've been with the organization since 2017. We're actually coming up on our 10-year anniversary in December, since we started doing this work. So for a collaboration of the 27 municipal police departments in Plymouth County, as well as BSUPD, we've worked closely with the District Attorney's Office, the Sharks Department, and really any kind of community organizations and coalitions that are looking to make a difference. We partner law enforcement with recovery coaches, people in recovery themselves, to make treatment resources, harm reduction tools more accessible to people who use substances, as well as their loved ones and family members, with the goal of reducing overdose fatalities, which we have been able to do. I have some data slides in here that'll show you next as well. I don't have time to go over all of this, right? We can care for a while, but these are all of the different things that we do throughout Plymouth County. So we started as a post-overdose follow-up program, so someone overdoses anywhere within the county, and we're going to go out and offer services and support to both the person who experienced the overdose, as well as the family members. Kind of spin-off from that was the at-risk referral. So if we know proactively that someone is using substances, if they're at risk of overdosing, we can go out and proactively and offer them services the same way we would had they experienced an overdose. The at-risk referral also allows us to help people who are struggling with non-opiate substances, so people with alcoholics disorder, or really any kind of struggle that they're having with substance use, we can help through that at-risk referral. All of this information is being documented in our Critical Incident Management System through Kelly Research Associates, so all of our police departments have access to that system. It allows for easy communication across the jurisdictions, so if someone from Halifax were to overdose in Hanover, Hanover would enter that information, and with a click of a button, Halifax would have that information so that they could do that follow-up, and that individual wouldn't fall through the cracks. So prior to this program existing, that cross-communication wouldn't happen, so Halifax wouldn't have known with that resident had that incident, therefore, you know, missed opportunity to get that person some substance. You know, hotspot outreach, where everything we do is free of cost. The other thing that I think is really important is we're not insurance-based, so someone not having health insurance, or having the wrong kind of insurance, isn't going to be a barrier. But with that being said, we do have staff members who will help them with applications, you know, housing applications, health insurance, you know, SNAP benefits, really any of those kind of applications that people might need help navigating. We'll do mobile drop-in centers, so we went to, you know, police department training rooms, set up, had a recovery coach there with resources, Narcan, train the community on kind of how to use that Narcan, and distribute those materials, free of cost. We do family peer support, grief support after a fatal overdose has occurred, and really kind of anything in between. So we try to identify those gaps and bridge those gaps. And we also have, I'm sorry, one thing I missed, I think I have a slide on it later on, is the drop-in. The other thing that we launched in 2020 was the Situation Table. So it aims to bring together multiple service providers to address the needs of individuals and/or families who are at acutely elevated risk. So substance use doesn't have to be a factor, you know, oftentimes it is, but it operates on a four-filter system. There are over 105 different risk factors and 27 different categories, and intend to be proactive rather than reactive. So let's say we have a family, one of the parents recently lost their job, they were serving eviction notice, the car broke down, the kids aren't getting to school. We know that if we don't intervene, something bad is going to happen. So knowing that proactively, we can get together a team of people from housing, from the school system, from, you know, employment services, and we can wrap services around this family and hopefully prevent that eviction from happening, and that's just kind of one example. And so we have four of these tables throughout the county, it's broken up by court district. This is just looking at our fatal trends throughout the county over the last few years. So in 2024, we note the 32% decrease in fatal overdoses over 2023. We have seen significant decreases in fatal overdoses since starting this program, aside from 2020, when we did see a slight increase with that pandemic. So with the data we collect, we're able to do mapping, this is a county map, but certainly we could do individual community maps as well. It helps us to be able to see where incidents are happening, compare those trends from near the year, so that maybe there's, you know, a neighborhood or an area or something where we're seeing high rates of overdoses happening. If we know that, we can go into those areas and proactively offer support, place nalox boxes, you know, provide assistance and training that way. And so those, the red is our fatal overdoses throughout the county. This is looking at our non-fatal trends, so again, seeing that decrease, 36% decrease in 2024 over our 2023 numbers. And then these are those non-fatal overdoses. This is looking at our fatal overdoses since the program started. So we started kind of unofficially in 2015, but 2017 was our first year of solid data collection. So as you can see, you know, we are trending down, but 75 fatal overdoses is 75 too many, so we still have, you know, a lot of work to do. This is our drop-in center here, some pictures from our drop-in center. So we opened up a physical drop-in spot, it's probably 15 minutes from here. We're open for walk-ins Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, any other day or time by appointment, but we have people walking in for all sorts of needs. We've had people walk in looking for immediate placement and treatment, we've had family members walk in looking for, you know, Narcan or questions, supports for themselves. We have, you know, an extensive book library, a lot of books on how to talk to youth about substance use. We do know that our hardest age range for overdoses is 30 to 39, which we know is the parenting age, so there are a lot of youth who are being impacted by this as well. So again, really trying to help and fill in all of those gaps that we're seeing throughout the county. The other thing I really want to highlight, so we are a national model for the Bureau of Justice and Assistance, so we have police departments from around the country that will come here to Plymouth County to learn from us, to bring that information back and replicate it in their own communities. We have been federally funded since we, or actually, first we didn't have any funding, but in 2018 we got our first grant, have gotten a few other grants since. But unfortunately, those are startup funds, they're not sustainability funds, and so our time is running out in September for those federal funds, and so we're looking for opportunities to make this program sustainable, to keep it going. We've done a lot of great work, and have a really great team, and I think it's been a great tool for our law enforcement to be able to go out and help the community. And then, you know, probably you've seen this, released, I think it was February, February 24th, just about, you know, the opioid abatement funds that are coming into the communities that have yet to be spent. I think this is, you know, a really great way to, you know, spend some of those funds. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Now, just, excuse me, does Plymouth County connect with Norfolk County and the other counties on that database?
Yep, yeah, so all the programs look a little bit different, so we have like a really robust, great county-wide approach, led by, you know, civilian outreach worker. Not all of the programs have that, so sometimes it's communication with, you know, other police departments. Most of the state, I think, aside from Suffolk County, is using that Critical Incident Management System. So let's say one of your residents overdosed outside of Plymouth County, we would get that information in the same way, because they're documenting stuff like that. But certainly we get calls to it for people kind of outside of the county, and we always try to direct people to resources within their community, and they have, like I said, a really great team, very knowledgeable of all of those resources.
Is Brockton part of this?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Curious, has Halifax ever contributed in the past as part of this, or would this be our first venture into the PCO?
So Halifax has been an active participant since the program started. There's never been, where we've gotten the grant funding, it's been 100% funded by the grants, so there's never been a need prior to this.
Sure.
Yeah, well, there is, I should say, there's a year we did this, so not nothing, but there are things that are, you know, are unlovable expenses through our federal grants that we, the police departments have paid dues into, but it's been a very small amount. So this is, this is the first time we're coming to you guys and asking for support for the program.
No, I think it's fantastic, and I think your number's kind of vet out that it's working. So kudos to you guys.
Awesome, thank you so much. And I have this folder that I'll leave you with, I only have one, but I can email the information. In here, there's, you know, a little bit more about our mission statement, our history, our full 2024 annual report, certainly when our 2025 annual report comes out, we'll make that information available. But there's like a ton of information that we collect that we're able to accurately help the community and what the needs are. So I'll leave this with you guys.
Yeah, just a quick thing, so the federal funding, the grants are ending in September, but do the towns, are those, are the towns receiving those on an ongoing basis, or do we have those in the kitty from prior years that need to be spent for those, or both?
So, yeah.
So the towns, basically, what we're receiving now is funding through the opioid settlement abatement.
Okay.
Decision. So every town is, you know, there's a calendar of what funds are being released to each community, what the amounts are, when that's taking place. So that's actively taking place right now, so Halifax is getting money for that, and along with that is very specific criteria that...
Power distribution.
You can't just spend this on everything you want. And, you know, there's even discussions with people in my own community, and apologize, my name is Tim Khan, I'm the Chief of Police on the town of Hanover. But people have had some great ideas, but they don't check the boxes, this is really very specific, and it's great. My point, this is one of the reasons why I come to these meetings with Vicky here, is to show that, advocate for law enforcement, why it's, this program basically keeps me from having to reinvent the wheel. We have a program that is data-driven, shown to work, proven to work. I also like to kind of give my own personal take on it, why this is so important. I started my career in the early 2000s, right into this, albeit epidemic was really starting to take over. I was responding to overdoses on a daily basis in the community that I worked in at the time, and it was very difficult, especially as a very young patrolman at the time, to walk away from those scenes and really leave a family disheveled and disarrayed. They had no way to turn, and I didn't really have any answers for them. Back then, our approach as law enforcement was, we were trying to arrest our way out of the problem, and it was not productive, and nobody else was doing anything. So this collaborative effort that has been undertaken by all 27 communities, Bridgewater State, the DA's office, and our privacy of Plymouth County Outreach, has really been a tremendous answer and a fantastic response to do something but none beyond just arresting our way out of a problem. You know, I think what PCO really does, and really enlightened law enforcement, opened our eyes, is to the importance of eliminating that stigma that goes along with drug addiction. So, you know, our officers today, they respond to an overdose, they have tools at their disposal that can now ensure that this family has some level of support, whether it's an overdose that led to a fatality, or we were able to revive that individual, just to make sure that they're not just taking care of what their family's taking care of. You know, in my community, we were just speaking, your question about do we, counties work with one another? PCO was in my own community yesterday for an overdose that took place outside of our jurisdiction, actually outside of the county, but that communication, I just speak to an example of that, where, you know, we were at their door the next day, offering some level of assistance. So it's very refreshing, it's very eye-opening. I think this is the right approach, you would be ashamed to watch PCO go by the wayside. It's been a lot of turnover with leadership and law enforcement in Plymouth County over the last five years, especially since they took that collaborative effort together, all these past chiefs, they got together, and now they've all started to kind of retire in the last few years.
Time, it's a good thing.
Keep him around level of one.
Trying to chew through the rope, though.
But I think we have a real responsibility here to keep this going, and not just, you know, look the other way. So I think that we've done a really good job in Plymouth County, Plymouth County Chiefs Association, of really uniting, sticking together, and trying to approach our communities to take this head-on and really commit to the mission of Plymouth County Outreach, so we really appreciate the support that town Halifax could offer in that effort.
Absolutely. Again, I think it's a, it's a very worthy cause here. But just a question as far as our funds, would, is it a percentage, you think, of our, or Chief, you have a...
So just to answer Tom's question, so Halifax began receiving payments in March 15th of 2024. Up to date, we received $84,199.84. That money, that amount, was put into a revolving account at town meeting, past town meeting, so it's in a revolving account that's specifically made for, you know, for issues with opioid use. So the money's there now, the money is going to be payable to Halifax until 2039, we're going to be getting federal monies for this opioid...
Of an undetermined amount, or that amount, or undetermined?
I don't know if that's...
So I can, I don't have it with me, but there is, there is a determined amount, you're going to get money each year, it's not the same, but I can definitely get back to you.
Yeah, my numbers could be wrong, but according to my notes from our meeting, we had a cover, it was $280,000 total from now until 2039 allocated for Halifax.
And so if we don't allocate it to the PCO or otherwise, what is the, what is the plan?
Can use the brand analysis.
Right, so is there, there's nothing locally that we do, no, nothing, this isn't...
No, no, I mean, you can use it, I'm sorry, you can use it for PCO or other programs in town.
But at the moment, we don't have anything...
No, we've had, so we've had meetings with the fire chief, council on aging, and water health, and we've come up with, you know, some ideas, some items that we can utilize it for, that will not, you know, hamper the PCO. There's plenty of money there for some of the programs, like the water health was talking about installing these sandbox, basically, like the fire department has those knockboxes where somebody, like a family member could go in there and grab some Narcan, well, PCO provides that as well. So, you know, it kind of all works together in, you know, cooperation, so.
So there's some overlap, okay.
Yeah.
And that was my question too, like if and when these funds are all allocated, we're not, as a town on the hook to continue to, you know, keep making, you know, I would say donations, but keep making payments to you guys if that funding is no longer there?
That's correct. I mean, that's really, the ask right now is really hoping that you would consider directing those funds, specific opioid abatement funds, to this effort, and hopefully this buys us more time to become more self-sustaining into the future beyond 2039. Gives us a lot of time to kind of game plan.
And Chief, I'm going to guess you're behind this program.
Oh, I understand. I just sent another guy for the train that Vicky was talking about. It's, I have two officers that already do, you know, the commission follow-ups, so that they all speak highly of it. I was actually a, you know, co-responder in, when I was in New Bedford, we started a program, kind of similar to PCO, you know, so we would go with a clergy member and a outreach worker to visit, you know, homes with overdoses, and it worked out well. It really can speak to, you know, about it.
We do have data that supports like what happens when we go out to the homes, how many people accept services versus how many people decline, so in that annual report, like all that data is broken down as well.
Great. All right, so what are you looking for us, do we need to make any sort of vote tonight, Bob, or?
Well, the vote has to come out of town meeting. We'll have to...
So just a recommendation, maybe from the selection?
Yeah, so we'll have our article, hopefully, you know, for town meeting, to allocate, you know, however the amount is going to be. Right now, I mean, it's not official, but it's $9,896, that would be Halifax. So what happens is, I think Vicky is going to create a, basically a kind of a working database on the percentage, and I think it's still a working document, because they're trying to figure out, you know, the, like, so like right now, we're in the hook for 1.5% of the total...
Total budget?
Budget.
For what it's covering.
Brockton, Brockton's 20%.
Right.
So they're trying to, you know, ju...
Break down the numbers.
So about $10,000 would be Halifax's contribution to it.
For this year?
For this year, yeah.
Of the 84, 199 that was allocated?
That's in there, we're currently right now. So we still have 79.
We're still in good shape.
Makes sense.
Great. So if all the communities participate, it'll sustain the program?
Yeah.
Makes sense, thank you for coming here.
Great. Yep, Bob's got a point. So did you do any other fundraising other than the municipality's contributions?
So we've never done fundraising, right now, we're not, our own entity, we're not a nonprofit, we're applying for all of our grants through the charities Bridgewater, and then that would just be used to serve the entire county. So our plan is to be able to continue to do that, so again, this is all kind of, we're going to all the town meetings and trying to work out all the details and make it sustainable for everyone, but the plan would be to just send the funds there into a separate account, and we would continue kind of operations as we venture.
One more question. So what is your budget for the fiscal year?
So I think, I think that budget was about $700,000.
Yeah, $659,000, yeah.
Yeah, so that was kind of cutting out all of the extra stuff that we've done over the years, and really, you know, sticking to what our, what our data supports that we...
The most effective.
The grant provided, Vicky and her team are really a great opportunity to try things that have never been tried before, too, and not effective. Vicky makes a very honest assessment on that.
Sure.
And she eliminates that from the overall program, where, you know, the money is going to be very risky and responsible.
Responsibly used.
Yeah, there you go. We like that.
Just one quick follow-up question, let me try and understand, the federal grants started in October of 18, but are being sunsetted in September?
So they, so those funding opportunities are still available, but they're for startup programs?
Okay.
So they let us...
Let you go out to pass...
So the ongoing, the ongoing contributions are being received by the towns in Plymouth County, the 84 to up to 239, or up to 2, whatever it was, through 2039, those are state or federal grants?
So that, the opioid abatement fund?
Yes.
It's a settlement, as part of the settlement from Purdue Pharma, that all the pharmacies are paying into.
All those...
So nothing to do with state funding?
No, no.
Great, well, I thank you guys, I mean, it's a need, you're showing that you're making endroads with the need, and I would hate to see that stop, so I'm all for it.
That's a problem, it's not going to go away.
Yeah.
No way.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Take care. Thanks, Chief, thanks, Vicky.
I'll leave that with you guys, I'll be glad to email the information over as well or any follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave that with you. Okay, sure.
All right, next up, letter B, we have Halifax Energy Manager Kathleen Stanley, well, I don't think is joining us tonight, no. But we have Daniel Cooney, I'm guessing you're right there, from New Gen Capital Managing, Director, and it's regarding the presentation of possible vote for the net metering purchase option, so.
And Laura Frazer.
And Laura, all right.
And Laura Frazer's showdown.
Do you like, do you like Dan or Daniel?
Dan is great.
Dan, okay.
We met you a few months back in the, in the big room.
That's right, that's right, when you helped us save a project.
That's it?
Yeah.
We don't like to brag.
Yeah. And as we promised, we would come back and talk to you once we kind of got everything sorted out. So start with an update.
Please.
We were able to secure the last net metering in the state of Massachusetts for the National Grade Territory. We were actually able to make the project a little bit larger than we would have to shrink it. We're going to be able to make it a little bit larger, still under what it originally was going to be, but it is, the net metering program gives the largest benefit to the towns, it reaps the largest benefit, so we were able to secure that. You, we're proposing per our, our letter to you, that if you do this for us, you get first dibs on the power. So we worked with Kathy and Robert to kind of figure out what the electricity use is here, conservatively, making sure that we're conservative in that, so we don't overbuy. And Kathy and myself, we actually lowered it just a smidge, just to make sure that, you know, we're being fiscally responsible, and that's about a 750,000 kilowatt hours. So there's still, you know, two-thirds left to sell, I'm not worried about that, I can take care of that, that's not your problem. Again, as we said before, this is at no cost to the towns, this is pure savings, but we wanted to secure that because we still have a lot of work to do selling the rest of the power, and we want to make sure that Halifax is taken care of first. Right behind this, we're also going to go to the housing authority, just to make sure, because they're outside of your budget, we're going to make sure that the housing authority, if they want credits, they can take advantage of them as well. But we'll sell the power, the, the hope is to have this thing built in '26. It is to our benefit to have it built because of everything going on with the big beautiful bill. The project will reap, reap the best reward for us as the owner and operator to have it built in '26.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, yeah, so our goal is to kind of wrap up and close as soon as, you know, the project is cleared, we have to get it cleared through a smaller size, through the utility, we're just going to go and do an update with the town, it's already fully permitted, as a reminder. This is just to make sure all paperwork matches across the board, so once we do that, we'll start getting ready to build it in the spring. We won't do it when it's winter, because the cost will skyrocket, and we're trying to give the town the largest value we can, based on the net metering. We proposed, and this was in the letter before, that we proposed a 20% net metering credit for a town this size, usually you'll see 10 to 15, but that 20 is the large towns, City of Brockton, those are the types of discounts that we do give, and it was a 25-year PPI with two, two extensions, two five-year extensions. Other than that...
It's savings about 42, should be about $42,000 worth of your savings.
In electric costs for the town?
That's correct.
Yep, and that's annually?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a million dollars in the first 25 years, give or take?
When you say the scope of the project has changed a little bit, can you give me a ballpark on how, how much the project has increased size-wise?
Oh, well, it's shrunk, actually, from what it is on your permitting right now.
Okay.
So it was originally cited... Um so it was originally cited to be about a two megawatt.
Two megawatt D C.
Two megawatt D C site. Um originally, when we came to you, we thought we were gonna, we were gonna have to shrink it to get that net metering um allocation. We thought we're gonna shrink it to one point three, but we ended up being able to get it to one point five. Um some, there are projects that can drop out of the net metering because they didn't meet their deadlines. Um so while that, we were working everything out, somebody dropped, and we grabbed it just in time, and Bob was amazing in helping us do that. Um the developer, there is actually, so we're gonna kind of step in as a co developer to kind of hold the hand and make sure that this is done right moving forward. Um so we are working with the current developer. We're the owner, we're the one that's buying it. We're gonna co develop it, and we're gonna actually take the lead all the way to the end, just to make sure it gets done to how we manage projects. Um as a reminder too, for those that weren't here, we own the largest, all right, not the largest, I take that back, the oldest solar site in town. Um we actually own the land underneath it as well. This is not the big.
Down on River Street?
One.
You guys are on River.
No, this is on Mavs, this ma uh, oh my gosh.
Matapoisette?
Matapoisette.
Matapoisette.
Matakes.
Matakes.
Matapoisette, I think.
No, Montponza.
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 All right.
Mad something.
Mad something. Okay, okay.
Um so two thousand fifteen that project turned up. I know there was another one behind us. That wasn't us. I know there were some issues there, but um we've always had a great relationship with the town. We've always worked very closely with the town, and we just thought it was a great project to step in too, because we saw it was struggling. There were two developers prior to to us stepping in. This project has been, I.
It's two thousand fifteen.
I could not believe it. When I heard, I was like, no wonder though, the landlord's losing his mind. I was like, all right, then let's step in as lead. Let's take it to the finish line and and do it the new gen way. So that's part of the deal with the developer, is that we're just gonna take it from where it is. They originally wanted to register this thing as a smart project. They weren't able to um because of certain qualifications. So that's when we stepped in, we realized we could add value, we could, you know, buy it, take it off the developer's hands and get it to the finish line. But now with the big beautiful bill, we have, we have to.
The fog is ticking a little bit.
Yeah, so we wanna make sure the town Halifax is taken care of, and then we're gonna do what we do best in the back.
And just to remind myself, this is on Summit Street, over on Summit Street.
This is on Summit Street, yes.
And you said you're gonna, the project's gonna start in early twenty twenty six. Is there anything going on there now?
No.
There's no, there's nothing? No heavy machinery, no clearing of anything?
No. Nope. Not not us. I mean, if the landlord's doing something, but no, no.
There's no activity for us.
So but you say that you're the owner of the land, but the the developer.
We are releasing the land. We're gonna be leasing.
So could the current owner be doing something?
Could the what?
Could the current owner or developer be doing something with that land now?
Current owner of the land might be um that owns the land and the house, but not to work on the solar site. There's no land clearing or anything of the nature being done right now. That would be done when permitting's done. Like when we get permitting updated and just make sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted.
And just to to circle back, I know we said before, all of the regulatory boards have, you guys have all been through with those guys, and nothing you're presenting to us tonight is changing any status with any of those regulatory boards.
The only thing we're gonna do is make sure that the revised solar site, it for the size, which is smaller, is going to be submitted to the planning board as a site update.
Okay.
That's it. But it's been fully permitted, and we could build it today if it was a part of the smart program. It's not. Originally, there was also gonna be a battery. There's no battery on this this project.
Okay.
So, which is which is better, safer, so.
It's twenty five years with two five year extensions.
Okay. All right. Any other questions to the board or anything? So I do have some verbiage here, Bob. You gave this to me here. So uh I will entertain a motion that the board move to vote to authorize the interim town administrator to negotiate, finalize and execute on behalf of the town, a power purchase agreement with New Gen Capital or its affiliates as assigned for the purchase of approximately eighty percent of the town's municipal electric load at a twenty percent discount on the public net metering rate with National Grid at a floor of eleven cents per kilowatt hour for a term of twenty five years with up to two five year extension options. Set agreement to be subject to review and approval as deformed by town council, and the interim town administrator is further authorized to execute any related documents necessary to carry out this book.
I should have asked before. That sounds great.
Okay.
There was, there was something uh that you mentioned earlier about uh good news for us. Remember, you started to say something about uh maybe donation or something?
Yes, part of our agreement, yes, part of our agreement that we signed is upon the commercial operation of the system that we're going to donate.
Twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred dollars. Yeah, twenty five hundred dollars. Sorry, you're making me look bad now.
It was two hundred, that was two hundred fifty thousand. It was, no, no.
Um but and we also are gonna open up the um the solar monitoring system for the community, so the local schools can use it for STEM initiatives if they want in the classroom. Um so they can see real life um solar sites in action. We've already opened up, and you might need the access again, because we did give it to Cody right away. You already can access the Halifax site that we have in operation. We did that, it's just an add on to just kind of help the community figure out how you wanna use that resource. Happy to meet with the schools as well, if if it's something that they wanna understand. Um did we also have in there that there was gonna be a site visit?
Yes.
I I believe there is also site visits later into that as well.
Yeah, there was.
We can schedule a school visit to the to the sites, uh to the sites as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Back to Jonathan.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with everything.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
For saving us the money and helping schools.
We appreciate it. You too. Take care, guys.
Sorry.
Laura. Oh, no, that's okay.
Send me a new P P I.
We're gonna send P P I, and you know what? I'm realizing we're gonna put that in the P P I. Now we just have it all in one place. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. Thanks, Laura. All right, next up, we have C. Uh we have Sarah Tumi with the Possible Appointment to Holidays in Halifax Committee. You guys wanna come to the hot seat? Come on up. Come on down. Hi, am I pronouncing that right?
It's actually Tormey spelled.
Say that one more time.
It's Tormey, T O R N E Y.
Tormey.
She's not spelled it.
Uh oh.
All right.
Tormey. No, no, it's right on the card here, so that's good, but it's just wrong on the agenda. Tormey, I apologize, Sarah.
It's okay.
Um first off, thank you for being willing to volunteer. Uh why do you wanna be on this committee, I guess, is the first easy question for you.
Sure, yeah. So I moved here um at the beginning of the year with my fiance, and we really wanted to get involved with the community. I also work at Rock and Trust, so we involve a lot of our time helping communities too. Um I'm from Pembroke, and in Pembroke, I also did look at Christmas tree lighting. I did the Winter Lights five K. I hooked up with the fireworks, stuff like that. So I thought I could carry that over here and help. And then Kim also mentioned doing help with marketing. I didn't major in marketing, but I took marketing classes. So I can totally help with like the website or Facebook or anything like that. I'm just ready to help more.
Great, great. No, it's a great committee. Uh we have all of the, a lot of department heads come in and help out, and uh Kim, you've you've been a godsend on the on the committee. So great addition to Tanya, who also does great work. I think it's fantastic that you're willing to jump in. Believe it or not, it's gonna be here before we know it, because we're already looking at it two months away. So um I I'm thrilled that you'd you'd like to jump in and help us out. Um anything else from the board?
I would just like to add, it's a terrific event with a lot of good people who'll help out. Anybody looking to volunteer, give their time and effort is good by me, so thank you.
How how big is the committee? Five people? No?
Sarah will make three official board members. Is that what?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But then we have a lot of, I don't, I don't even, we call them volunteers.
Liaisons.
You're a liaison.
Yeah.
And then we have several different events going on, and we have usually have like someone in charge of each area.
Oh, okay.
So more volunteers on top of volunteers.
That's great. That's great.
Never have too many.
No, I know. And you guys uh usually run help with the chili cook off. I know that's what they did anyway last year, so.
Yes, and I already got my troops going for that.
Excellent.
I just have a donation. I got everything going.
Excellent.
We got the official email that Rock and Trust is donating a thousand dollars towards the event.
Fantastic.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I know. The community comes out in spades. It's it's terrific. Um and I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, it's usually the coldest night of the year or like the snowiest or rainiest, but uh knock on wood, we have some.
I run year round, so it doesn't matter.
It doesn't bother you? Okay. Uh we also have a couple of things in the works. So you wanna, you wanna promote your your event here, Kim, or do you wanna hold off until they're official?
Well, we haven't signed a contract yet, but we're in the works. We um have decided not to do fireworks, um being fiscally responsible for the town and the volunteers and everything. We thought it best to hold that off till the Fourth of July committee, and we are in talks of having a synthetic ice skating rink for the event. And um a few new things like that. Hopefully, turn of a hometown community, you mean like Christmas.
Norman Rockwell's.
Halltown feel.
Yeah, it's great. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. It really is. No, it's a great time. So thank you. So I will um entertain a motion to appoint Sarah Tormey to the Holidays in Halifax Committee uh for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Kim, if you're looking for somebody to volunteer, I'll help this year, whatever you need. I would love, I would love to volunteer.
Oh, there you go. It's on camera too.
You can't have the chili, though.
No.
No.
Somebody, didn't somebody?
I'm retired. I can help.
Someone did win last year.
Didn't somebody win? I forget. Somebody won last year.
I can't remember.
I don't know, but he's wearing a pink tie.
Yeah.
I did, didn't I?
Yes, I did.
He did. I don't think he found him till the next day.
No, I didn't. I didn't, so. So we have your card.
Wendy's?
No, I did not. It's an old family recipe from great grandpa Google, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it was the hit of the night. So we'll have your card here signed and um.
I'll get it down to Sue tomorrow morning, and I'll I'll just contact you via email and let you know you can come in and get swan in whenever, you know, you can get up here. All right?
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you need us, need a say for the approval of the permit for light green or we go?
Yeah, um yeah, we wanna jump down. That's a good idea. All right, so we will go down to uh F on our agenda, which is the approval of the use of the town green for holidays in Halifax. Kill two birds with one stone while you're here. Um so this is for use of the town green. It is, where's my date here?
Thirteen.
Twelve thirteen, yeah.
Twelve thirteen, and it's beginning set up at noon. The event will go from five to eight. Uh there'll be an opening ceremony. We're still working on getting the elementary school for their uh chorus performance. Uh it's an awesome time. We'll have a tree lighting. Um it'll be a can't miss event, so I will gladly entertain a motion to approve the Holidays in Halifax use of the town green for December thirteenth, twenty twenty five um for holidays in Halifax.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Do we have approval for a rain date if necessary, or is that?
Well, it's not on the form here, Campbell. I don't know.
Well, it's not gonna rain.
It's not gonna rain. Actually, it's gonna be beautiful.
No, Tom put it on there. You just put it in like six fonts, so I I couldn't see it, so. Yeah, no, it's in there. You just gotta zoom in. Uh all right, so I will also entertain a motion to approve use of the town green for the rain date of twelve fourteen, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, back to it. Okay, uh we are down to D. Consider lifting of hiring freeze for building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, wiring inspector, and recording secretary for finance community. So basically, uh you guys remember, we put a hiring freeze on to help with our financial situation. We're in a little bit of a tough stretch, like most communities around us. Um and basically, in my understanding, it was that we couldn't add any new positions to the books in an effort to try to keep our costs down. Uh I will say that these uh positions here that we are looking to fill, uh folks have left, and I would argue the three of those are are crucial, and we really can't function as a town without those three positions. So um Bob, I think you're looking for us to make a motion to authorize the hiring of those three?
Let's not hire and freeze.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion?
Let the hiring freeze in general or specific to those three?
To these three.
To these three. Just the three, yeah.
So if there's no discussion, I will entertain a motion for lifting the hiring freeze for our building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, our wiring inspector, and recording secretary for our finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next up is E, which is a possible appointment to the wiring inspector of Dennis McManus.
If he was supposed to be in tonight and he was all, he must have forgot.
Okay.
But he uh he was.
We have a letter, though, don't we?
We do, and he was the assistant.
Right.
Okay, because the other gentleman, he passed away, so.
So I have, I have a letter here from our um building commissioner, Joe Braga, that says, as building commissioner for the town of Halifax, I am recommending the appointment of the following individual to the following position with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And that is wiring inspector Dennis McManus. Um and he says, if you have any questions, we can ask. So um he's got Joe's uh approval, as Pam said. He was our assistant.
I said, you wanna do it? And he said, oh, yeah, most definitely. So he was.
So he was the prior assistant?
He was the assistant, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he's already kind of in the system, familiar with the operations, uh and this would just be moving up the ladder as unfortunately, our our wiring inspector had passed away, so. I'll be looking to fill that position. So.
Kinda wish he was here.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Board, okay?
I mean, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if he's been, you know, if he has to do any inspections.
Yeah, I think if we can move it tonight.
Yeah.
We know him and.
Yeah, I get it. The only problem is here, we're without a building inspector, and his letter is dated prior to his working here. He's not working here anymore. He's recommending someone who didn't show up tonight.
He's still working here.
Until?
Till Friday.
Okay. Totally noted.
Um we have a number for him, Pam?
Um.
I'll call him up.
Wait, is it um? No, it's not there. I can go look it up in a minute. Give it two seconds. Do you want it together or no?
I'll, I can entertain a motion to appoint, uh and we can see how that goes. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dennis McManus as the wiring inspector for the town of Halifax with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
So moved.
And I will second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes by majority two one. All right, next up, I'm not good at going back to the over, like the overview of this thing here. Here we go. Uh all right, we've done E, F, we're down to G. We're down to the approval of minutes. So guys have all had a chance to read them. I will entertain a motion to approve the select meeting minutes for August seventh, twenty twenty five, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, September ninth, twenty twenty five, and September twenty third, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously zero. All right, now, without further ado, down to H in our town administrator update, Mr. Bob Fantasy. Bob, you have the floor.
This file meeting.
And it's the highlight. We saved the best for last.
Okay, so you may have gotten your letter or a card from the um insurer, from the uh National Grid.
Yes.
On the aggregation rates, and they're going down, which is amazing.
Which is great.
Uh it's going from fifteen point, so zero point one five one seven per kilowatt hour to zero point one four one six six kilowatt hour. So if you're part of the aggregation, it it you'll go to that automatically. Now, you can opt in, you can opt out anytime if you think you can get a better rate, which right now you can't.
Yeah.
You know, we're just staying with the National Grid. Uh some of the things you might wanna know is no actions required for current participants. The new rates will appear on your December bill, so not until December, you'll see it.
Okay.
And again, you may opt in and opt out. If you need more information, go to our website. We have this on our website. And also a link to uh the Colonial Power, which manages this.
Great.
Okay.
Great. Good news. We like good news.
So that's the first thing. Um personnel issues, uh as you mentioned earlier, uh the building commissioner has resigned. Uh he is actually retiring. Uh the, he was an interim, and he's been on since, I believe, maybe. Last day is October tenth, which is Friday. I wanna thank Joe for stepping in, handling many building and zoning issues in a quick and professional manner. And we wish him all his endeavors as he goes forward. Nato's place in the M M A, that's the Massachusetts Municipal Association, where generally people look for municipal positions[1760.12] where generally people look for municipal positions to help people apply or qualify to apply for this position. I checked it today, unfortunately, yeah, it went in last week, we had zero applicants come in. And a lot of these, a lot of these positions, there's just a lack of people going into municipalities now, so.
I know there are communities that have been waiting a long time for their building commissioners.
So we're also looking for, along with that, another interim to come in, at least do the...
Still ship for a while.
I could pay the permits and so forth. The finance committee secretary job opening's been posted, and that, it's not a, it's not, it's a four-to-six-week, a four-to-six-hour-per-week position. So it's a smaller position. I have to check, because there's some language that may be in the union, which doesn't make sense to me, but I'm gonna check with council on that.
Would it be, I don't know if we, how much we can deliberate here with the update, but would it be worth seeing if a current minutes person would absorb those hours and, and take that on as opposed to trying to find somebody for four to six hours is, is gonna be tough?
Yeah, and they can apply for that, too. You know, if that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Pick up extra hours. That's a good point.
Yeah, I just think we might have a better chance of finding somebody if the hours are greater than, you know, jumping in for just four to six hours.
Okay, you recall the town of Halifax has acted through my office solicited proposals for a request for qualifications for the senior center. The deadline was yesterday at two o'clock, we had nine applicants.
Oh, fantastic.
It was great. And I looked at them, and man, I mean, they're great applicants.
Great.
Their proposals are like top-notch.
Fantastic.
So it's gonna be difficult for Colliers Engineering to narrow that down to probably two or three interviews. But that's, that's what we have in mind.
Are we interviewing or where's the...
So, so what happens is they narrow it down, and it goes to the building committee.
Yep.
Municipal and school building committee. They'll set up the interviews, and whether it's the whole committee or they do a subcommittee to interview, they'll go through all that with Colliers, too, and I'll be there. And we'll narrow it down to the, they'll narrow it down to the one or two to bring forward to the select.
Fantastic.
And I'd like to see two.
Yeah.
You know, at that level, at least you have a choice.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just, well, here it is, one candidate.
No, it's great, you, you hear horror stories about one, two, you know, bids, and the fact that we have nine is...
Not as good.
Fantastic, great news.
So at their October twenty-first meeting, the committee will meet with Colliers again, and they'll, they'll go through all of these, they'll, they'll get them a week before, the committee will get all the, all the documents. It's now on a flash drive, all of them, and they'll be able to look at them before, so they'll have a week to look at them before they meet. And then they can meet and discuss.
Oh, it's great.
Building committee will then hold a meeting thereafter, it's either gonna be on November seventh or the fifteenth, and send the number-one designer to the select to vote for them, for whoever it is. And it's anticipated that the, the group would start right after that, after the boards.
Great.
So it's moving along, it's kind of exciting.
Yes. We've been waiting a long time for a senior center that, that is worthy of the town, so I'm excited.
Next thing I have is the town of Halifax is looking for experienced plow truck drivers.
Yep.
Actually, I'm coming with the season, they must have the availability to work long hours in emergency snow events, and we know what that's like.
We don't get snow anymore, I don't know what you're talking about.
Town's offering to increase differing rates depending on the size and the size of the plow and the size of the truck. So the bigger they are, the more money they, they get. Interested people must complete a plow drive application packet, which is available to download on our website. Upon completion, the packet should be returned to the Halifax Highway Bond at sixty Hemlock Lane, Halifax. And then here's a kind of a bonus, if an application is returned before October thirty-first, an early sign-on bonus of four hundred dollars per truck will be paid out at the end of the season.
Great.
And there's a lot of competition to get these truck drivers to come into the town everywhere.
Everyone's doing it, yeah, it's tough.
Do they have to, do they have to plow a certain amount for us to get that incentive?
I didn't see that in the qualification.
Okay.
For more information, if you have any questions, you can call the highway department at seven eight one two nine three one seven six oh. The next to last.
Okay, you're, you're cooking, you're...
Last week, at a preliminary meeting with the finance committee chair, John Walters, a really good meeting regarding the first projections of the revenues of the town. Budget for fiscal year twenty-seventh officially kicking off tomorrow, with department head meeting, in which the department heads will be given guidelines on establishing a sustainable and balanced budget for the next year. Department heads all realize that'll be a somewhat lean budget coming up in short of bringing in any new revenue. New revenue could be in, in growth, or it could be some other way, but we don't know a lot of hope of getting new revenue coming in, so.
Correct.
So we're ready for it.
Yep.
And we're gonna be moving on. And finally, just a reminder that the water department will be in flushing water mains on about October fourteenth. So you may see that, that disturbance in your water, you know, and, and try to, it's gonna be done at night, so try not to, you know, get involved in doing dishes or doing laundry at that time.
Great.
And again, more information, you can always call the water department at seven eight one two nine three one seven three three.
Hey, good stuff, Bob.
Thank you.
That was a good one. Oh, you know what, I forgot. Just a quick update on the Sora Lake Regionalization Study Committee, which is a mouthful. The committee did vote to go with the Collins Center out of Boston, so they'll be performing the study for us. It'll take about a year, and it's going to, collecting all kinds of data. We're gonna need data from the administration at school, from town, from all different kind of players in the game there, just to look at how we can be possibly more efficient, both at a cost-saving level and at an educational level, to make sure we're trying to run as smooth a ship as we can. So I, I don't anticipate any results from that, at least I would say for another calendar year. But at least we got somebody on the hook to do it, so that's kind of exciting, too, so, sorry for that, I mentioned it. Alright, anything else from the board, you got something?
Just one thing, just housekeeping, I will not be here on a November eighteenth meeting.
November eighteenth, alright.
I don't know what the timeline is on those interviews for senior center.
That'll be November...
November eighteenth meeting?
It could be. Because the building committee might meet on the seventh or the fifteenth. Is the eighteenth the second?
It's the third, we switched the schedules, we switched from the first and the third.
November, December.
For the next three months, my first and third, I will not be available on the eighteenth.
Well, you wanna make it the first and second?